Commissioner Zelich?
President.
I note Commissioner Smith absent, Commissioner Jensen?
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Present.
Commissioner Rossi?
Here.
Vice Chair Sheard?
Here.
Chair Jenkins?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda tonight?
Do you have one loser card for public comment? That is for Heidi Hoskins.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and? Oh, okay.
Am I okay?
You're good.
Yeah, you go.
Someplace else?
Nope, you're perfect.
Okay, I had to be the first one. I don't know how much I'm supposed to say.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. So I own Sister Salon at 1561 Meyer Street. Next to me is 1569 Meyer Street. It's an apartment complex that we have, over the years, worked with code enforcement to try to get them to clean up their garbage. And the last time, they told us that there was nothing that they could do, that it was a problem with the Planning Commission when the new owners took over. And I have some pictures of just a few of the incidences that we've had with the garbage, but it encroaches. We have problems with rodents now that we never had before. The smell that goes clear across the street when it's warm. Our clients are complaining. And we just want to see if we can get some help.
Thank you. I don't believe we could take any action on this type of thing, so.
You can set it for agenda in the next meeting.
Can we have staff look into it, or is?
If we have staff, give direction, staff to look into it, bring it back if it's appropriate for that.
And I was gonna bring it up when we have Commissioner reports.
Because I remember when we approved this building, and I'm not sure if something got missed.
I wasn't on commissioning, so I don't know.
My salon is at 1561 Myers. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have for submitted public comment.
Thank you. We will move into the public hearings now. Open the public hearing, and if it's okay with the commission, we're gonna move item one. It won't be item four, but it'll be our last item.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so we will start with a staff report on item two.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
To start off tonight, I'm gonna go over a use permit review for the Gilded Needle Body Art and Fine Jewelry. This is located at 1440 Myers Street, Suite B, APN 012092005. The applicant is proposing to operate a body art studio with a primary focus on body piercing and fine jewelry retail. This proposed use qualifies as a moderate services, personal service, moderate impact use under our code. Despite the fact that it is currently a moderate impact use, there are no nuisance impacts that are expected related to noise, odors, or lighting. And as the commission knows, we have been in the process of moving this type of use to low impact anyways, so there are no nuisance impacts expected. This is also compatible with other commercial activities in the downtown, and staff does recommend approval with conditions of approval. This project is also categorically exempt from CEQA under 15301, which is existing facilities. Under our Code 1748010, the commission does have to have required findings. I have those listed out here. Again, the proposed use will operate entirely within an existing commercial suite. It is not expected to generate excessive noise, odor, or other nuisance impacts. It is designated MU for mixed use in the general plan and zoned MXD, which conditionally allows moderate impact personal services subject to a use permit. And the proposed use complies with the applicable zoning and land use regulations. The site is already developed and served by existing infrastructure. No new demands on public services are anticipated. Again, although the business is classified as a moderate impact personal service, it is not expected to generate traffic beyond typical levels for downtown commercial activity. And the site is an appropriate size to support the personal service and retail operations. I've also included a picture of the proposed signage that she will have at the business location, and that concludes the presentation for this one. Does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to speak on this?
Hello, my name is Ciara Holder. I'm proposing to open my business, the Gilded Needle Body Art and Fine Jewelry. For a long time, I've been piercing in Butte County. I'm born and raised here in Oroville. And I think it's time for Oroville to have a studio dedicated to biocompatible materials such as gold and titanium. Currently, the people of Oroville have to drive long distances to get a quality service regarding body art, particularly piercing. And so it's my goal to bring, you know, that quality service and body jewelry to our town so that, you know, no one has to travel far anymore. And that's all I have to say for now. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Open the public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this from public?
I have no submitted speaker cards.
Thank you. We will close the public hearing and limit discussion between commissioners and staff. Any questions, comments?
I wanted to make a comment. When this came from the DRC, I just really appreciate the work that went into the artwork on the sign as far as keeping the historic look
Yeah, it's really beautiful.
of downtown Oroville. I really do appreciate the artwork of that.
I agree.
Yeah, I'll just comment that I've seen the space as I walk through that building quite frequently. It's clean looking. I mean, I'm not a customer, but if I needed something like that, that's exactly the kind of place that I would go to, and we appreciate the investment. Thank you.
Thank you. And my, I'm wondering, since we are moving tattoos from moderate impact to low, we didn't specify piercing. But I was wondering, since it hasn't really come to the Planning Commission officially, could we add that in so we could possibly make that part of what we're moving to low impact?
To add body art?
Just add, just to make sure we're adding the body piercing.
We will make sure that.
The commission was open to it.
We will make sure that wording is included in the ordinance.
Okay, so we still have time because it needs to come back here anyway, and then we can take it back to council. But I think it's in the spirit of what council wanted with the tattoos. And that way, people wouldn't have to have a use permit.
We'll, when we bring it back, don't forget that edits are available to the commission.
Okay.
Right? So if we miss something, or we don't get it quite the way you think you want it, then we can always make those adjustments.
Okay.
If they're not hugely substantial, then, you know, it'll just proceed to the second reading. But I'll make note of the point that you're making and
Yeah.
review it before it comes back.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, we're open for motion.
I'd like to go and make a motion to approve item number two as agendized.
I'll second.
Thank you. Please open voting.
Motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. When do you open?
Hopefully as soon as possible.
Awesome.
Probably by December.
Cool. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we will move to item three. Staff report, please.
So next on the agenda is a use permit review for the Spicy Kitchen. The Planning Commission shall consider approving a use permit for alcoholic beverage sales at the Spicy Kitchen Restaurant, which is relocating to 2450 Oro Dam Boulevard East, Suite A, APN 013170073. The Spicy Kitchen is requesting a use permit application for Type 41, which is on sale beer and wine, to serve alcoholic beverages in conjunction with meal service at an existing restaurant relocating to that address I already said. Next, the proposed application, this is zoned MXC for corridor mixed use. This proposed location is likely to contribute to an over-concentration of alcoholic beverage licenses in the surrounding area. However, this is done on purpose as most of our alcohol sales are typically found in that area or in downtown. So staff does recommend approval with conditions of approval. I do have the required findings for alcohol sales listed in the packet. Requirements two, three, four, five, seven, and eight are all outlined specifically in the project conditions. For number one, within the 500-foot buffer, the surrounding uses include a mix of commercial businesses, many with existing alcohol licenses already. The area is already accustomed to commercial activity, and no negative impacts are anticipated for the proposed license. For number six, hours of operation, the applicant intends to sell alcohol during normal business hours, which is limited by state law to 6:00 AM and 2:00 AM. And then whether the, the police department and ABC determine if there's an undue concentration in the area, I do have a letter of public convenience or necessity as part of this approval for them. And then I do have a picture of where the location is in case anyone was unfamiliar.
This is the location of the former Patio Restaurant.
Right.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Would an applicant like to speak on this item?
It does not appear that the applicant is here tonight.
Okay, that's fine. Do we open for public comment then? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
I have none submitted.
We'll close public comment and limit discussion between commissioners and staff. Questions, comments?
I sure am glad they're moving. I think they needed a bigger area. I think the patio is a great area. I think it's gonna do well. There's good parking over there. I think it's centrally located in town, and I think this would be a great benefit to even other, the hospital too.
Yeah.
For an option, so I think it's great.
The previous occupant had a full bar with no problems, so.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
I think it's gonna be great to have that building filled again.
Yep.
I agree, yeah.
One less empty space.
Amen. Sounds like we're open for a motion.
I'll move to approve item three on the agenda as specified.
And I'll second.
Motion passes, six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. And staff report for item four, please.
Yes. So this is a request to add new signage for a business syndicate cycle, including signage attached to the original front sign, which will remain intact and in working order, a new pole sign, and a painted sign in the location of the former wall mural. This is located at 730 Montgomery Street. And I do, if you can go on to the next one. I do have pictures of the proposed signage here, as well as the dimensions of the signs. This is the one that will be attached to the former sign. The applicant can speak on that a little bit more, but I do believe that he is planning on revitalizing the current sign. This one is the proposed pole sign. The pole is currently there. The sign is not there. And then this is the current wall sign. I would like to note that the painted wall sign was completed prior to submission of, or approval of any permits. However, once the applicant became aware of the necessary procedures for signage, he has been fully cooperative and eager to bring the project to compliance. This is in the intensive commercial C2 zoning district and is being brought forth because it's also in the downtown historic overlay. If you can go to the next one. The proposed signage at 730 Montgomery Street is being reviewed under both the creative sign permit as well as a landmark modification permit. While this property is not a formally designated landmark, staff has determined it meets two of the city's criteria for local landmark status. Number three, it exemplifies or reflects elements of the city's history. And number four, it has special aesthetic or artistic qualities that are of historic value. Because of those qualities, we're proposing this project go through landmark modification permit to ensure the proposed changes are consistent with the building's historic character. In your packets, the staff report discusses the creative sign findings. These focus on the design quality, creativity, and how the signage contributes visually to the site and surrounding area. The blue sheet provided tonight outlines the landmark modification findings, which address the project's consistency with the building's historic period, its compatibility with nearby landmarks, and the preservation of important artec- art- art- architectural features. Under this creative sign criteria, staff finds that the proposed signage demonstrates strong design quality and enhances the appearance of the building. Under the landmark modification findings, staff finds that the signage is consistent with the historic period of the structure, compatible with nearby buildings in the downtown historic overlay, and does not destroy or diminish important historic features. Overall, staff finds the proposal meets the intent of both the creative sign and landmark modification criteria, and staff recommends approval of the project as presented. Does anyone have any questions?
I was wondering how far apart is the modern dry cleaning sign and the pole sign? Like how many feet?
Twice seven feet.
Thank you. I was thinking it was far. Okay.
It's actually on a whole other, on a grand property.
Okay, it's hard to get that from them.
We'll need him probably to come.
Okay.
He's got a microphone. Would the applicant like to speak? It's all being recorded. It's on the microphone, and they'll know what's going on.
That way anybody on YouTube can watch it live.
All the people watching.
My name's Matthew. I've lived here for the almost 40 years of my life. Motorcycles have been my whole life. And I'm tired of there not being anything here for anybody in this community. I have a lot of passion and a lot of desire to make this something that this town can absolutely benefit from. And I'm good at what I do, and this will be great here. The signage is something that has gone back and forth. We've spoke a few times about it. If there's any questions on how this is oriented, because I kind of threw this together because I'm not real sure what I'm supposed to be doing or not doing at this point. This will be, I think, I think it qualifies for, I think it says 31 to 35 square feet. This is 35 square feet. And it leaves a foot in every direction of the previous modern dry cleaning sign. That sign is being rehabilitated and is now in working order with new power ran to it.
That's awesome.
That will be refinished and repainted here shortly. The pole sign is less than a foot in required documentation that you guys spec. And the painting, which I thought was gonna be okay because there was one there, so I took that upon myself. Now, the dimensions of this is, puts it two square feet larger than the existing painted sign that was there. It's just taller than it is wide, whereas the modern dry cleaning sign was wider and not as tall. So I tried to stay within the guidelines that were required, but I guess there's some gray area, so whatever we can do to fix that, I'm here to cooperate with that. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you.
I'm just thrilled you're there. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I love seeing the life come to that.
Let's, we'll see if there's public comment, and then maybe, maybe get you back for some questions or answers.
If you want to do.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have anyone open public hearing? Does any, anybody from the public like to speak on this item?
I do have one submitted speaker card for Raquel Nolan.
So I am the property owner of 730 Montgomery, my husband and I. Through this process of trying to get Matthew in there to get our building up to code, we developed, some things have been kind of coming to light. My question that I have is, as the property owner, landowner, when was this building designated a landmark? I've now been enlightened from this meeting that it is qualifying under two criteria of your guys' actual application. So my big question is, when was it designated? Who designated it as a landmark? When did that happen? And what, well, now I know what makes it the landmark. And why were we never notified? Because I'm concerned that if it was a landmark building and in looking at potential tenants going in here and renovations, that I feel like I've kind of left shorthanded and behind the eight ball, not knowing that we should have taken a different approach because we would have helped our tenant not to make egregious areas on the signage. And, you know, if he painted over a mural that was what we thought was a business sign. I'm just looking for clarification so that some future owners that are in this historical downtown overlay, even though we are not downtown, we are still in the overlay, might help prevent some problems in the future and create less gray and unclarity and us feeling like we're behind the eight ball and doing wrongs when we're just trying to bring smaller businesses and to keep the businesses and to take buildings that are empty and get people in there and provide more income for the city.
Thank you. Is that staff, something staff could easily?
Need to answer that, yeah.
We've talked about that. Raquel called me, I think we spoke last week, right?
Yes.
And I owe you a call.
That's okay.
But we'll do it tonight. So Wes and I spoke about it, and there, so we do have the criteria. We don't know when the, when they're designated exactly, but we do realize that we probably should put it on the website and then make it available to people. So we have a list, and then, so we'll post the list on the website, and we'll come up with some sort of plan so that, it's difficult because we don't always know when places change hands also. It doesn't necessarily come to us, so, but we'll try to figure out a way to do it. And you might have had some other thoughts about that already.
Well, in addition, one of the duties of the Historic Advisory Commission is to inform the city council of all of the landmark buildings in the city. We have, I believe, a dozen landmark buildings on our list. It's been that way for many, many years, so presumably it's already gone to council, but years ago. We should update that list. And then it also, one of the duties of the Historic Advisory Commission is to recommend other buildings for landmark status.
Yeah.
So that's something that, that we'll have to resurrect the old historic surveys that happened back in 2018, something like that, and start looking at these again to identify them. Well, we'll fix that.
And just from my perspective, the sign is all the character.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, the building is not.
And that's primarily why we brought it to the, to the commission.
Yeah, the sign is really the goldmine of that building.
And we like the sign.
Mm-hmm, that's what I know. You always have.
You know, we, same thing. So my husband and I, you know, have been here for almost 40 years. And so we have been in the community, had our business, and we're just around the corner. So we've always taken pride of cleaning up the blithe in our area and trying to undo that, you know, damage that our side of town seems to some, I get because we have the river, the transient, the field, and stuff like that. But we do believe in preserving it. I just couldn't figure out why my concrete building is a landmark. And if it's the sign, great, you know, I am all for preserving that. I just am confused and kind of caught off guard. And, you know, I'm here to support and same thing, preserve, but I want to preserve what needs to be preserved. And I just don't understand why a concrete building, how it qualified.
So I have a question as well. What is the clarification between a mural and a sign? Just so I know, when I'm driving through town and I'm seeing things, I.
I believe that signs are when they have the actual business name on them. A mural is, it doesn't have the business name.
But that's, it was Modern Dry Cleaners.
And Delivery.
And Delivery was on the side of the building.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But that's a sign, not a mural?
It's a wall sign.
But you have it in here as a mural. That's where I'm, I don't want to cover up a mural, but you have it listed as a, that they covered a mural.
Okay.
I didn't, that's where I'm confused.
My apologies. We were having a difficult time with defining what it was, whether it was a mural or a wall sign, but it is a wall sign.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
So then can we kind of shore up the landmark status of buildings and signs and make a new list and add one, you know, add new ones that we need to add, and then notify every single building owner that has one and have it available to them? So that's what we need to do for sure.
It would be helpful.
Yeah.
Like I said, I just, I feel awkward, uncomfortable that we've done things that here I am thinking, I'm trying to bring my building up to code, and now I violated something, and now my tenant is like, oh, no, you don't, we're supposed to do that. And I'm like, I didn't know. And even when we applied for our permit to do our repairs and bring things up to code, nothing was ever specified that this is a landmark building and you need to blah, blah, blah. So how even in my application did that get missed if now all of a sudden we're three quarters of the way through, and now I am an issue with a landmark?
I agree. I feel like it was a shortfall.
Have you guys owned the property long?
Totally agree with that.
Seven, we bought it from the Britons. It's been like six years that we've owned the building, and it's been vacant.
Mike was a planning commissioner here for a time.
Yeah.
So that might have had something to do with getting the status.
That makes sense.
So it'd be the Britons are the ones that's bringing the historical.
He might, he was, he was a planning commissioner about 10 years ago.
Okay.
No one I got on.
She brings up a lot of good points, and we, we agree. We need to do, put something in place so that we have something that everyone can see, but then also a workflow for this.
Yeah, we'll work on that.
Is it, is it costing, is there, are they having to pay for the permit to cover the landmark, the sign?
Yes, they did have to pay for a landmark alteration permit. But any time that you add new signage or change the exterior of any building in the downtown historic overlay, it does require a similar process, so.
So can you clarify, is this truly a landmark modification, or is this just a sign modification? Because there was no mural. It was a sign. It was a business sign that was painted over when we painted the building. So what's the clarification?
As I have in the PowerPoint, we are going forward with this as a landmark modification permit due to the fact that it reflects elements of the city's history, and it did have special aesthetic or artistic qualities that are of historic value. So we did put it through that.
So the only artistic thing is just the lighted sign?
Yes, at this time.
Okay.
But we are thrilled you are there. I can't, thank you so much. It is just how it has transformed that section, because I drive there all the time too, and so thank you. Well done. It's beautiful.
Looking forward that Matt, for him to be able to open up and to provide something that we don't really have in our community.
Absolutely.
And we're close to the freeway, and it's just a great area.
Oh, I've heard people talking about it. People are excited. Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
It's a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, so.
Chair, just, I might, for clarification purposes, we do define mural, murals in the, in the zoning code in. Chair, just, I might, for clarification purposes, we do define mural, murals in the, in the zoning code in 704060. So there's a list of definitions. They're alphabetically sorted. In this particular part of the code, it's the purpose of the work that is at issue, right? So a mural, as defined in our code, is a work of art on the exterior wall. Art is a pretty broad category. Exterior wall of a building, so not just anywhere. And it's put there for the purpose of decoration or some kind of artistic expression. That doesn't preclude the sign from having identifying business marks if it's a presentation for artistic purposes. And you do see that with tattoo shops with their exterior walls, like kind of showing their artistic capabilities through their mural work. You could see it through Syndicate Cycle as a, you know, a way of expressing that kind of a shop. So that's how we define murals in the code. But don't forget also that even if it is a mural, there are still some conditions associated with signage where they're commercial in, in nature, right? So we have to kind of walk in both worlds, which is why one of the reasons that the staff has approached it this way is, is an appropriate way of handling this situation.
Thank you for the explanation.
What is the price difference between a permit for what she's being charged? And if it was just for the sign, if there was not a historic mural behind it? Like is, is there price difference big?
Information.
The, the lighted sign is historic, so that's what, either way it would be historic, right?
Yes.
Oh, so we're not talking about this mural right here?
The, the other sign is also attaching to the historic sign, so they would still need the landmark modification.
Okay.
This is what's. Covering, but one permit covering both.
One permit for the whole thing. Okay, good. I just didn't want any extra charge.
That's pictured is what is making this a landmark, is this sign, not the sign on the side of the building.
Thank you. Okay, got it.
All right, we will close public comment and limit discussion between commissioners and staff. Questions, comments?
And once you like that modern dry cleaning sign, it's gonna look awesome.
It's beautiful.
With your sign below it. It's gonna look really cool.
Open for a motion?
Doesn't mean I won't show up with a suit.
Open for a motion?
I can make a motion that we approve this as agenda size.
I will second the motion.
I don't know the number.
Motion passes. Success is one up there.
And, is everyone ready? Staff report for item one.
All right, I notice there's a lot of people here that are from, for different items. If, if your item is done, you're free to leave. You don't have to stay for the whole.
No, no, stay. Everyone should know what's happening at the planning commission.
We appreciate the crowd. Don't, don't, don't let Matt into that.
No one ever stays here.
All right, this is a item that's been in the works for a couple of years. And so I'm going to take about a 10-minute presentation, cover all the bases for this. This has not come before the planning commission before, other than in status reports. So the project before you is one that's been discussed in various iterations, as I said, for about two years and more. It involves developing 170 acres of the 420 acres of industrial land that's south of Ofer Road there. We've over the years discussed several projects, including a business park, captive food processing warehouse project, a data center, and a 3.2 million square foot regional warehouse, which is the picture in front of you. What is before you tonight for certification is an environmental impact report. This report is a hybrid program and project EIR because we do not have a project applicant. What we have is a hypothetical project here, a speculative project, which represents the maximum buildout of this site at about point four of FAR, 40% of lot coverage, et cetera. And the EIR analyzes the effects of this maximum project, knowing that any smaller project would thus have fewer impacts. So if this EIR is certified tonight, we're open for this project or any other project of a smaller nature or of a different nature. The maximum project's components would be four large five-story warehouse buildings, ranging from 774,000 square feet to 869,000 square feet. It involves up to 2,200 truck and employee trips per day. Extensions of the water system and sewer to this greenfield site would be required. And traffic improvements would be needed along Ofer Road. Could be a four-way stop, traffic signal, roundabout, et cetera, depending on the specific project and getting into the site. This is a picture of the project site. And the stars on the left, which we'll talk about later, are the two houses that are within about 650 feet of the, the edge of the site. And then there are some wetland features, which we'll talk about as well. Just for information, this is another potential development scenario that's, that's been designed in concept for a while, which shows, this is, I think, a 280,000 square foot building and another smaller building on part of the site with a circulation pattern in there that avoids the wetland features. This is another concept that we've had for many years, which has a multi-tenant business park in the same area. So there are many, many options as to how this project gets developed. These are some pictures of the wetlands that are in the southwest and southeast portion of the site. That is one of the potential impacts, environmental impacts. So in 2022, when we had some interest in developing this area, we decided that based on that interest, we would front the funds for the required environmental impact report. And we did so. We, we've fronted a little over $300,000 for this environmental impact report. Now that the EIR is completed, we're asking the commission to certify it as adequate for CEQA purposes. And, and you haven't done this before, so I'm going to go over how to do this a little bit. In certifying an EIR, CEQA requires that a jurisdiction's decision-making body satisfy itself that all reasonable environmental effects have been properly considered and analyzed prior to making any project decisions. Further, all impacts must have been mitigated to the extent practicable so they're less than the significant, which means less than the established legal threshold of significance, if possible. For example, the wetlands, which I just showed, the project, if built, any project if built, would have to avoid these wetland features. This 3.2 million square foot project has set aside 38 acres, I believe, on the south in this area here, which avoids the concentration of wetlands that are on the site, so that they can build on the rest of the site. The entire mitigation monitoring and reporting program, we provided a link in your packet. It's also on your desk, the complete proposed final mitigation program. And it has mitigation for lots and lots of potential impacts. We did not include it in the packet because that's the EIR there on the counter. There's a draft EIR, there's a final EIR, and that big one is all the technical appendices. So we didn't want to burden you with over 1,000 pages in your packets. The EIR indicates that all impacts can be mitigated to less than significance, except for three. One is greenhouse gas emissions. This is a large enough project, in fact, any of these projects would be a large enough project to be cumulatively considerable by definition, even after all possible feasible mitigation measures are applied. So this impact would remain significant even with these smaller projects. The second is vehicle miles traveled, or VMT. This exceeds Oroville's interim threshold of significance that was adopted in July 2024 by the city council. The threshold for significance is that any project that generates VMT above the baseline, which is over 6.7 vehicle miles traveled per employee. And the analysis indicates that the VMT for this project is 25.4, well above the 6.7. This generally translates to any project over 63,000 square feet of warehouse. And so that's quite a bit smaller than what we've evaluated here. So that would remain significant regardless of what project is put on this site. The third is air emissions. With 2,200 trucks and employee trips per day, there was a health risk assessment completed. And it's determined that the two receptors, those starred residences within 650 feet would be potentially impacted by toxic diesel particulate emissions. And that's above 1,100 trips per day. So that impact would be significant and unavoidable for the larger project. And maximum practical mitigation, which is in that MMRP that you have in front of you, would include an all-electric fleet above 1,100 trips, transportation demand management plan, which means that the project that goes there would have to have employee carpool and vanpool and other kinds of assistance. If under 1,100 trips, however, these receptors would not be significantly impacted and no mitigation would be required. Also, to reduce reactive organic gas and NOx emissions, the Butte County Air Management, Butte County Air Quality Management District requires an offset fee of $771,000 at full buildout to reduce emissions elsewhere. So we have some significant impacts that are significant and unavoidable, so what do we do? This council or this commission can certify a statement of overriding considerations. The decision-making body, if they decide that the project outweighs the environmental impacts, the value of the project to the community, they can certify the EIR in spite of these significant impacts. CEQA requires that any impacts that cannot be mitigated to less than significant be covered by this statement of overriding consideration that acknowledges that even with the significant impacts, the project is considered to be in the city's best interests, that jobs, economics, social and/or project goals outweigh the environmental effects. The draft statement of overriding considerations is on page 27 of your packet. The findings for that are, and then the actual statement of overriding considerations is on page 32 of your packet. Every environmental impact report, especially one of this size, receives a lot of public comments. We got nine public comments for the draft EIR, which were responded to point by point by point, and they are all in the final environmental impact report. Those comments determined that none of the comments were significant enough or to, to require a redrafting or recirculation of the draft EIR. So the draft EIR, we feel as staff and the environmental consultant, who is also here as a panelist, he's available to answer questions, did not warrant redrafting of the EIR. We didn't miss any of the analytical items to the extent that we needed. There are some minor, minor changes to the final environmental impact report. We have received four public comments when we circulated the final EIR. One is from advocates for the environment. They objected to the health risk assessment and its conclusion that at 1.56 million square feet or 1,100 trips per day, that there are not adverse health effects to nearby receptors. It argues that those effects were not adequately analyzed and all feasible mitigation is still required. These risks were in fact analyzed and at 1.5 million square feet, the risk to receptors due to diesel emissions considered by our EIR consultant, lots of technical experts and science involved in this, would not be significant. Second comment by the Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance. This letter also argues that the health risk assessment was underestimated, arguing that the risks are elevated in a disadvantaged community. However, the science used by our consultant accounts for the actual baseline and impacts does not add the subjective factors suggested by that letter into this analysis. And as you can see, there are no disadvantaged communities. South Side, which is the closest community, is a mile and a half away. So that would be a bit of a stretch. It also argues that the EIR is flawed because it does not analyze environmental justice under Senate Bill 1000, which was passed in 2018. It is true that environmental justice is not considered in this EIR. However, that is not a required analysis until the city begins its next general plan update. We confirm this. SB 1000 is triggered when a local government adopts or revises two or more general plan elements. We have not done so concurrently. We have not done so. We probably won't do that for another two or three years. So at that time, we will have to comply with SB 1000 and create an environmental justice element or consider environmental justice throughout. Environmental justice is a very valid concern, but it is a project future for us. The letter's environmental racism argument claims that Oroville has a concentration of multiple large projects generating mass truck traffic in our industrial area. That would be nice, but we don't have a huge concentration of, of transportation projects here. Lastly, the letter recommends that the EIR should be redone to mandate a zero emission project. Zero emission project is a wonderful idea and thought, but it is not practical at this time. The third comment from Lozoo Drury, representing the Laborers International Local 185, came in on Monday. This is one we initially received in June, but it was well after the comment period ended for the draft EIR. And the FEIR was actually almost complete, so we did not need to respond. Now, of course, they've taken issue with the final impact report as inadequate, so we have to respond. Their comments have to do mostly with biology, claiming that there's more special status species than our biologists found. For instance, it argues that monarch butterflies must be assessed, even though there's no milkweed on the site, which is their favored food, but that we should also address whether they might migrate across it. It also suggests that habitat loss, wildlife movement, bird window mortality, once the buildings are built, and impacts to wildlife are absent and should have been assessed. We had two biologists that worked on this in great detail. They say that all of these were actually addressed in the DEIR and the FEIR. They also disagree with this comment letter on several points. The person who gave us observations of many, many birds, including tri-colored black birds, which is an endangered species and a number of other threatened species, his vantage point was on the eastern edge of the property. He did not go onto the property, probably didn't have permission to do so. His observations are not therefore indicative of the heavily grazed pasture land on the site where fewer birds and wildlife. site where fewer birds and wildlife would naturally occur than those that he observed. He's got pictures of them, and the more heavily vegetated edge. So our biologists both disagree. One of the comments is that this is the same almost exact comment letter that she has seen multiple times for EIRs of this type in other jurisdictions, and only the first 17 pages are different with photographs supposedly taken with a site visit. So I mentioned the tricolored blackbird. The commenter claims that that's there, but the biologists say that it's very hard to distinguish between a tricolored blackbird and a red-winged blackbird. Red-winged blackbird is quite common. Tricolored blackbird, the photograph that he provided is at dusk, and if he has not reported it to the powers that be, then it's very uncertain that that's actually this endangered species. So that's the sort of response to these comments that we got this week. And in any event, if these are there, the pre-construction surveys in the MMRP, the mitigation monitoring program, that will be required prior to any construction will identify any of these species if they actually exist. So one of the requirements is that at certain times of the year, you do surveys and try and identify whether nests, burrowing owl, for instance, or other types of species are there. And if they are, then you have to adapt with your construction schedule and/or techniques. The fourth letter from Blum, Collins, and Ho is a verbatim repeat from their February comments on the DEIR. The FEIR has addressed all of those point by point. So we'll be asking you to certify the EAR, so let's talk a little bit about the project and the use permit. We're not asking for approval of a use permit at this time. There's no current application. We're not at all sure that 3.2 million square feet will ever be built. There is a draft resolution in your packet on page 34, which includes proposed project conditions that staff would propose if the 3.2 million square feet were built. It's for your information only. You can see that the pages say "draft" across them, so we're not asking for any use permit approval because we don't have a project application at this time. A use permit, in fact, in an M2 zone would only be triggered if a building exceeds the 65-foot maximum height limit in our code. That height has been suggested with this 3.2 million square foot project, so we've included it. If not, no use permits would be needed since it's already zoned M2 and all the environmental effects have been considered, so warehousing and distribution would be allowed by right with lots and lots of conditions, including those from the mitigation monitoring. If a smaller project is submitted, staff and the commission will follow the normal permit process, staff review, the development review committee, and planning commission review if applicable. We will, if a smaller project is permitted, adjust traffic circulation, architectural review, landscaping, grading, et cetera, to the appropriate scale. And air emissions, if the project is under 1.56 million square feet, will not be significant. So that's pretty much an overview. We'll be open for questions. We note that the property owner is here, potential user is here, and other folks associated with that. So that's our staff report.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Would, I guess, since we don't have an applicant, would the property owner or a potential applicant like to speak? You don't have to, it's your choice.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Steve Bo Shaw with Panatoni Development. We're a international industrial developer, started and based in, actually Sacramento. Our headquarters is now down in Newport. We develop and build these types of projects all across the country. For all the big Fortune 500 companies that you guys all know and see and hear, usually on the retail face, but also there's a huge supply chain behind all these companies, and these are the projects or the sites and the type of project that they're looking to mark as potential locations for their business supply chain. And as you obviously probably know as well, you know, more and more difficult to get industrial sites permitted and through the environmental impact report, you know, in California, and there's more pressure to actually kind of push them out of certain areas. So Oroville is a great location for this type of facility. What it means to the community is jobs and a whole variety of jobs. I think Ken's also noted in there the, you know, kind of the assessment of improvement value, property tax value. You know, in summary, this is, you know, half a billion dollars of construction cost if it just stays in the general warehouse distribution type of facility. If it was a data center, you kind of multiply that number by about three, depending on the size. I'm bugging Ken to get some power to the site. That'll entice one of those users. So huge property tax incentive. And some of these facilities also with the internet, online sales actually become point of sale, so there are sales tax generators also that can sometimes land at these types of developments. The employment base or the employment demand, it does vary drastically depending on the type of facility and operator, but some of these facilities do require up to 500, 600 employees per shift. Some of them run 24/7, so you could have three eight-hour shifts of 500 employees. So we're talking, you know, 1,500 to 2,000-plus jobs, and that could be even in just one of these buildings. So it's really where the supply chain is going, the distribution is going, more and more having materials and supplies available locally as well. So some people look at this and say, oh, this is adding a lot of trips and traffic. But if you look at like, if they have to come from somewhere further, like if they're supplying goods from Bakersfield or supplying goods from Stockton, there's a lot more transportation involved in that versus having it centralized in closer to communities. So that's just kind of a general overview. We're assisting the property owner on this. We're not the applicant, but because this is the industry we work in, we've just been kind of advising where the trends are going, what the benefits are of this type of facility. So any specific questions that I can address while I'm here?
Yeah, so you say this type of site is limited if you are looking to build what you've described.
Yep.
Can you tell me like how limited? Like, if I wanted to build a facility like this
Yeah.
and Oroville had one, where would my other, what other options would I have?
Yeah, it's a great, great question. So right now, kind of the short, low-supply, high-demand product is actually a building in about the million-square-foot range. That's more and more what we're seeing. Targets are doing Amazon, Walmart, Georgia Pacific. We've placed and dealt with those in the Central Valley. There are zero of them currently available in the Northern California market. There was a few in Stockton that just got filled or taken down recently. So if you look at that size, there's very, there's virtually none in Northern California. You have to go to Southern California. You start coming down a little bit smaller, 500,000, 600,000 square foot, there are some of those available. Sacramento Metro Air Park, I'm sure most of you maybe fly in and out of Sacramento Airport. There's some product there, but a lot of the stuff that's been sitting, and there is some vacancy in the market, is mostly in the smaller 250,000, 150,000. What's happened is all the big suppliers have moved towards a bigger, more efficient footprint. So you would be probably, the latest is you'd be on a list of about five to six sites in Northern California that could accommodate a million-square-foot. And if you've got an EIR done and this process cleared, now there's certainty of delivery, timing, and cost, and that moves you up even further. That's the discussion we've been having, or started this discussion two years ago with the property owner, was you got to get past this hurdle to get on these clients' list. Otherwise, it's like, is it five years? Is it 10 years? You know, you just don't know in today's market.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would like to note that on page 41 and 42, there's a rough fiscal analysis of what this project would mean to the city, and one at 600,000 square feet plus would be about $2 million in revenue to the city, various taxes and sales tax and property tax and other kinds of benefits, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and one of the reasons why I was a little late coming in is I was busy today submitting a proposal for a 1 million-square-foot grocer, so freezer-cooler facility, which is even a more robust facility, again, down kind of in the greater Sacramento market, but that was about a $260 million facility, and looking at that type of job demand, somewhere in the 500, 400 to 500 per shift.
So in your opinion...
Well, so again, this step is the big, significant step. Then after that, this is something that can be marketed out to all these national users. And like I said, in a case where you could put a timeline and a cost to a million-square-foot facility, that'll get some eyes on it for sure. And then it's just a matter of their demand in the region kind of hitting that spot. So it would be on a build-to-suit basis as of right now, to also answer the question of speculative versus build-to. Right now, that's typically going to be a build-to-suit scenario, but that may change as financial metrics change too. So there's a couple of different scenarios, speculative versus build-to-suit.
Is a cold storage, something that would fit in that?
Yeah, absolutely.
The closest one is, from here is, Tracy, I know there's one.
Yeah.
Where's there another one up north, you know?
I don't know of size or significance. I know, you know, Walmart just built a significant one in Stockton that was in that similar range of about a million-square-foot facility that they, I think, just finished up this last year or the beginning of this year. So yeah, that's been a commodity that's in short.
I think the one Tracy was, it was a US cold storage, I believe.
Okay.
Because I mean, that would not have a lot of traffic because it's just a storage facility, basically, right?
Yeah.
But it's pretty large.
Yeah, it's still moving, a pretty frequent commodity in and out. So yeah, they're going to be having a fair amount of truck trips. It would be similar to a, like a fulfillment or a last-mile kind of facility, yeah.
Okay.
So my question would be, based on your experience, I'm sure in your line of work, you have a vast amount of knowledge as far as outer rim, transportable, Goldilocks location. What would you put our location at on the, in the map as being, you know, obviously between Sacramento, Redding, in the center? Do you think that there would be a high likelihood that somebody large would pick this area?
Yeah, I think, you know, in discussions we've had about this location, and you've seen those metrics change a little bit for a variety of reasons. You know, obviously initially, it's like, you know, where's the shortest trip logistically fastest to the highway? Well, those sites are kind of gone now. And due to other codes that have come out, AB98, some of this proximity-sensitive receptors, that's pushing this product further out. So a lot of the users also now, the other criteria that's, you know, almost equally important is labor. And Oroville's always had a good labor, even though it's somewhat spread-out labor, it's always had a good overall basis for some untapped labor. So it's not competing, you're not competing here against, you know, Sacramento Metro Air Park or Stockton. You've got your own labor pool. So that part is a positive. You are right, it's a little further out, but as you know, you know, the highway construction that's improved between, you know, I-5 and here is a big benefit to that and that logistics. So, you know, if you can tell a story or, you know, the facts can show that, you know, 30 minutes, you're getting onto one of the major corridors, that's beneficial, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I would add, you know, just to that too, is, you know, I live in the Sacramento area, and up off the Highway 50 corridor, you know, is kind of seen as kind of a dead-end highway, like it's not where the big users go. Well, Trader Joe's just leased 500,000 square foot. They're putting a cold storage facility over there, adding on another couple hundred thousand square feet. So there's a, you know, a big national retailer that actually kind of went out 20, 30 minutes past the main junction of 5 and 99 and 80 to go where the labor was and the product was available, so.
So we're not limited by the 70? Because I had heard that we were so limited to ever getting big industry because of the size of it.
It's going to have a little bit of constraint there and where you do have some bottlenecks, but again, you know, those, the weighting of that does vary a little bit from user to user.
Right.
Yeah.
The labor pool within a half an hour commuting distance, Chico and Ubah City and some others, is about 95,000. So that's the total labor, labor pool here.
To what extent does logistics these days use rail? I'm asking because there's a major rail line adjacent to the property.
Yeah, unfortunately, not a lot. There's talk about that coming back and being, you know, a real, I mean, it is efficient. I mean, from like the amount of cargo you can move on, you know, a gallon of diesel over, you know, certain miles, I mean, there's nothing that's going to compete against it. It just unfortunately, it's usually the speed of delivery that is the hindrance of rail. We look at sites all the time with rail. I've been involved with sites to try to market for rail, and I think, you know, one out of, you know, 200 actually gets a rail user. So it's usually going to be big bulk.
Of course, I ask because it's one way to get around the bottleneck and something that could be used that wouldn't produce as much pollution.
Yeah.
But it's probably not as large enough and probably not enough, not a large enough market to justify the amount of, that you would need to justify it
Yeah.
and not a large enough facility to make a pencil.
Yeah, really, yeah, really, it's a user that's going to be a lot more raw product-driven, and, you know, that may change, you know, as we know, the industry's moved away from a lot of that, and there's talk about bringing a lot of that back in terms of mining and forestry materials and things like that. But yeah, that's the user that's going to drive those. Anything else for me?
No, thank you. We will open public comment. Is there anyone here that wants to speak on this item?
Yes, there is, but I know Wes briefly touched on the names of individuals who submitted the electronic comment, but I do need to read them into the record as well. So for that, we do have one, and they are, just for the record, all on your dais as well printed for your reading. So one from Blum, Collins, and Ho LLP, one from Golden State Environmental Justice Alliance, one from Advocates for the Environment, and one from Victoria Yount of Drury LLP. We do have one speaker here who would like to speak. That is Kyla Staley.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Kyla Staley, and I'm an attorney with...
My name is Kyla Staley and I'm an attorney with Lozo Jury here on behalf of Laborers International Local 185 or Launa. Launa urges the Commission to not certify the EIR at this time because the EIR fails to comply with CEQA. First, the air quality and health risk analyses are inadequate. The EIR underestimates the emissions of fine particulate matter and toxic air contaminants from diesel truck traffic and warehouse operations. Launa's air quality experts found that these emissions would expose nearby residents to cancer risks well above the air district's thresholds, yet these impacts were not adequately analyzed or mitigated in the EIR. Second, Launa's experts also found that the EIR fails to analyze or mitigate greenhouse gas and energy impacts consistent with California's chemicals. The project would generate thousands of daily truck and employee trips without any commitment to zero emission vehicles charging, infrastructure, or VMT reduction measures. Third, Launa's experts concluded that the EIR does not adequately analyze cumulative impacts. Orville and Butte County are already burdened by significant air pollution, noise, and traffic congestion, so adding another large-scale warehouse will exacerbate these conditions. And lastly, Launa's expert biologist found that the EIR overlooks biological resource impacts. The site provides habitat for special status species such as the Swanson's Hawk and Burling Owl, yet no updated surveys or mitigation measures were included to ensure that these species are adequately protected. For these reasons and those in Launa's written comments, Launa respectfully requests that the Commission refrain from approving the project and certifying the EIR at this time until the environmental, until the project's environmental impacts are adequately analyzed and mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you.
If the Commissioners have any questions about the environmental impact report, we also have on standby here Rod Stinson from Rainey who can answer most of the technical questions if you have any.
Thank you. If that was all for public comment, we will close public comment. We will limit discussion between Commissioners and staff. Questions, comments?
Does the staff have any reservations about the legitimacy of what's been presented to us today as far as the EIR?
No, I think that I've been overseeing the preparation of the EIR and all the analysis and the noise analysis, and our two biologists did surveys in 2023 and again in 2025. And I believe the whole EIR has been very, very thorough.
I've just had to ask, just one more summary question, that was it.
I'm going to build on that real quick just to make sure I've got the yes or no to the head from our city attorney on that question. Okay.
So staff has used the EIR for technical comments, and so their opinions about the EIR are what we put forward to the Commission.
Any other questions or comments? Open for motion?
I just had a question. Who do you represent?
Laborers International.
Laborers?
This.
Which one?
This one, right?
Yeah.
This one right here.
This one here?
Yes.
And what do they do?
They are. Launa is a labor union that's also concerned about having a healthful and natural working environment. So I'm here on behalf of members that live and work in Orville and Butte County.
So it's a labor union?
Correct.
And the labor union is concerned about birds and and other species? That's what you guys do?
Correct. I mean, yes, Launa is a labor union, but also has environmental protection interests as well as the other things they do. But I'm just here on behalf of them with respect to the environmental issues.
And you mentioned that our air quality here is poor. Why is that?
Just based on the Butte County Air Quality Management District, you know, they have thresholds for certain pollutants, and so to go over those thresholds would mean that that would be a significant impact. So that's what Launa was highlighting, which is, you know, if you go over a certain threshold, for example, for toxic air contaminants, which is diesel particulate matter, if you go above a certain threshold, then that could be considered a significant impact and significant air quality impact.
So your union has done studies on this?
Launa has hired air quality experts, yes. So I believe those reports are in the written comments that Launa submitted, I believe from Baseline Environmental Consulting. So those, all that information is in there, the calculations are in there and based off of the information that was in the draft EIR, the air quality documents there. So their study is based off of what was provided in the EIR.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments between Commissioners and staff?
I personally believe that in order for our city to grow, that we're going to have to grow somehow. I take the 38 acres that was split off on the south side, just to give you my background, obviously, everybody here knows it, but I have built many hundreds of acres of shrimp ponds in my life, and I have been involved in many environmental mitigations in my life, in my construction career in the Bay Area and such. And I personally feel comfortable moving this project forward based upon the fact that they've designed 38 acres to be left alone, based on the fact that we have a competent EIR that our staff is confident in, based upon our city attorney, and based upon the discussions that we've had tonight, I'm personally comfortable moving this forward myself.
Me too.
Motion?
Well, he hasn't called for a motion yet.
We are open for motion.
I think you did.
In that case, I am perfectly willing to make the motion to move forward as it is agendized as. Okay, now you're going to have to help me out with the exact language here. The consideration, correct? On page 35?
Let me get there.
No worries. Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It wasn't page 35. It was the overriding considerations declaration, correct?
Yes, we're asking to adopt Resolution P 2025-17, which is on page 25 of your packet. And unfortunately, when it gets into Muni code, the red line comments using track changes don't disappear from Muni code. So that's my mistake. There's one correction on this where it says the city of, this Orville City Council in the fifth whereas, that needs to be changed to Planning Commission. But we are asking you to adopt this resolution, which will certify the EIR, which will make findings regarding the environmental effects and mitigation measures, and will adopt the statement of overriding consideration and the monitoring and mitigation reporting program that is in your packet.
Can I make? Go ahead.
That's all covered in Resolution 2025.17.
Okay, then my, then my motion is to adopt Resolution Number P 2025-17 as agendized and as written on page 25 with the comments that Wes made to change from council to commission as set forth.
I will second.
Mural, I think?
Okay, that closes our regular business. And we are on to reports and we have Commission reports.
What about this mural that's getting approved?
I think that's coming up at staff reports.
Okay.
Do we have any Commissioner reports?
Well, one thing I wanted to revisit is what was brought up about the trash, the lack of a trash enclosure at 1569 Myers. And I think all of us know who drive there. It is constantly an unbelievable mess. It's obviously not adequate, the way that the trash was set up. And I remember when we approved this project for A.J. Beck, I don't remember if we missed the trash or I just am kind of asking staff, what happened? What can we do at this point? Because code enforcement has told me they can do absolutely nothing. It's just physically, it is a horrible situation for the trash. It seems to me that there's just all these different trash cans for both buildings, which I believe, I know there are 14 rooms, I don't know how many units. But I'm just wondering, this is kind of the point of good planning, so is there anything we can do on our end?
That building is, it was built over time and there had not been trash enclosure considerations for that.
Right.
So we definitely know about the problem at that building and we're actually looking at some options for that. So we have some ideas that we've been kicking around and we're trying to narrow one down.
And can that be done once the building's already been approved and all the remodels? Can we actually go back and say, guess what, you need a trash enclosure?
Dave might have some more.
Up to code.
So there are mechanisms for post-construction condition impositions for reasons of health and safety.
Yes.
But we, you know, would explore other ways of potentially contributing to solutions, like if we can find a, you know, a little bit more room, we could get an enclosure in there. The problem is getting a truck in and, you know, obviously, I'm familiar with the site and I'm familiar with the conversations we've had with code enforcement. So, but there are ways that you can impose post-construction conditions, impose permitting conditions, it's just they have to interface with public health and safety problems.
This does.
And it's rare, right? I mean, it has to be some kind of a serious issue and there has to be a practical way of solving the problem. So that's what we're tasked with trying to explore. When you don't have room for an enclosure, you can't get a truck in, the practical solutions kind of diminish, as you might expect.
So that doesn't sound like we have a hard and fast solution right away. Like, so what's our?
We don't have a hard and fast solution right now, but we're working on one. It's challenging and it's not something that's in my department, but I've been part of discussions on the sidelines and I know that there's some things that are being worked out.
Can you pull that up, that building up?
But we have to have the property owner's permission.
Sixty-five.
It just seems, it also seems like in the nuisance ordinance, you can't just have trash everywhere. That definitely is a violation, pretty clear.
One or five.
And so I just want to see, I just want to see it mitigated somehow, however we can think outside the box, whatever we could do, because it feels like an oversight that is causing a really difficult situation in a historic downtown where business owners have to entice customers and they don't want them walking past smelly trash.
Wow, that's a whole flume.
And this was before the remodeling. This actually looked better. We didn't, I don't even remember the trash cans there then.
So that building on the right?
There weren't problems then.
That building on the right is, that was redone, right?
Yes.
That's the great and new.
Yes. And now it's pretty much trashed all the time, all the time.
Which one is creating the trash?
The alley.
The two-story one on the corner?
Yeah, because it's both buildings. Yeah, you can see, but that's even a good picture. I have it on my phone, too. I take a lot of pictures of it. It's detrimental to the businesses in the area, it's hurting their business.
So where is the trash located? Is it between the two buildings?
Yes.
Yes.
It overflows towards our.
Okay, doesn't that building, isn't it vacant behind, this vacant behind that two-story building, right? Is a vacant lot behind that?
Correct.
Is it owned by this building owner?
I believe it is actually owned by Tom Fallo.
That vacant lot is?
I think you're right. I think you're right.
Because they have also been complaining lately that the trash is now going towards the back of the building and towards their stuff.
And that trash is for how many buildings?
The one behind it, too.
No, but I mean, it goes for that building? Does it go all the way down to Marko's Jewelers? Does everybody use that or is it just?
No, no, just the apartment complex.
Just that two-story building?
Yep, and the one behind it. There's a, you can't see because of the trees. There's another two-story apartment.
So how does recology picked up the trash now?
They bring them all out to the street and recology just, I mean, it's probably 25 trash cans that are out on the street.
And you can see they have street parking, so the trash cans are coming out on the street.
Yes, it's a mess.
It's a whole thing.
Well, it's a bad situation. Okay, so if Tom Fallo agrees, why don't you do a trash enclosure back there?
Well, that's a whole big thing.
No, but, I mean, that should have been addressed.
I know, that's why I feel bad.
And the building had permits to get remodeled.
I agree. And so that, this is a good lesson for me, too, to really think through these things when someone remodels and think through, I didn't expect, because I never saw trash like that before the remodel, never.
We didn't, and I don't know.
So I'm not sure of the whole situation. I just know it's unacceptable and we have to do everything we can to stop it.
Well, it's a health and safety concern, right? So doesn't that give us a little more jurisdiction if it's a health and safety concern?
Yeah, as I mentioned, it's, you know, there are ways of imposing post-construction conditions, but realistically, those solutions are going to come out of code enforcement rather than, you know, planning at the moment within intersection with the department. But, you know, as you can see from the photographs, you can't, you know, get a vehicle back in there, you know, to a full-size dumpster or anything like that. So there are some limitations associated with the site that are going to impact the ability to find that quick solution. And of course, we always disfavor post-construction conditions because they blow the expectations of what was going on with the project, of course, even if it's unanticipated. We have a couple of these things, they happen from time to time.
Yeah.
You know, when you get unanticipated things like impacts on, like overland flow for rainwater, for example. Sometimes that can be a little unpredictable and if you don't kind of nail it down with a hydrology report and, you know, you end up with a need to look at post-construction conditions. This is similar in nature, unanticipated, you can't get vehicles in there really, so we're in code looking at different options. But you are right, health and safety considerations do allow us to do a little bit more. And, you know, addressing potential nuisance situations, I don't make a habit of characterizing those one way or another in a public meeting like this, but code enforcement makes those determinations and they try and work with the property owner to address them to the extent that they can be as our primary focus.
Does the city own all those lots? Across the street, there's that park, right? And there's all those parking spaces? Is that owned by the city?
Yeah, that's probably a question for maybe Amy Bergstrand, the housing person. So I don't know the answer to the title of all of those pieces and I wouldn't want to speculate.
Can I just say, we can't really mitigate this in this form right here. We have some plans that we're working on. When we have them together, it'll come back to planning because what, if any of the things that we're talking about are going to be done, it will require us to come back to planning. So we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah.
So that's what we'll do.
But it is on our radar.
Okay.
Thank you. Any historical reports?
I did have another, I was wondering, the business advocacy suggestions that we had come up and we workshop that last time, when is that going to come back to this commission for a vote?
You're talking about the ad hoc?
Yes.
That would be next, next planning commission.
Okay, and so then you'll be able to have the public hearing? Okay, it's just, I feel like it's going to be a year before any, I know, this takes a long time. It's just hard because I really want the people to get released, the business owners. Okay, so next time. No, we had our tours, our historic preservation tours, it was absolutely awesome. We need to do more marketing next time, but we had people from Sacramento, we had people come, they just loved it. They were, and they couldn't believe they didn't have to pay, and then they got to go into the historic buildings and hear from the owners. It was absolutely wonderful. So I'm super excited. So start thinking about buildings that you want to nominate because we're getting to that time now. They get the, I think maybe March or something, but still.
February.
February, there you go, Wes does it. I did want to kind of recommend a little change. You know how we announce it at the state theater and that's fun and everything, but I was thinking when the plaques come out, it would be really cool if the city council could give them their plaques at a council meeting, because that way it just makes that kind of that congratulations and the city council gets to give them the award. So that was something, kind of an improvement I thought of. But I'm working with Noel, she's great at the city, she's, we constantly want to improve it since this. She's, we're constantly want to improve it since this is a new, a new tour.
I'd also like to say that I'm very interested in moving forward with designating more landmark buildings.
Yes.
And working with staff and trying to pick out some houses and buildings and everything. That way we don't have the, you know, conundrum that we already had.
I thought people could come to you. Like, I thought that if I wanted to make Judge Gray's house a landmark, that I could fill out the application and pay the 1,700.
Absolutely, there is an application fee for that. And it comes to the planning commission. It actually, I think Kylie was telling me the city council actually has to make the designation. Is that correct?
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
This Dirk's Automotive, are we doing, is this, we doing anything with that?
It's up next.
Oh, oh, it's next.
Yeah. Kylie, I know there's a conversation about another mural as well first. Could you address that one first? We have people here for that and I don't want to keep them any longer.
Wes actually has that.
Wes, Wes or?
I need to share again. Well, I can say that they have a packet over there and I think you might have it in front of you. So the, the Art Commission approved a project to update the mural that's on the side of that building. So that is the, that is the Black Bart Stagecoach robbery mural. And you can see that it's, actually, that picture's pretty good. Because when you walk by it, it's sort of hard to tell it's a mural.
Right.
Right, yeah. So the, the Art Commission actually brought this forward. The art, there's an art, a local artist, Jack Townsend, who's drawn this up is what he would like to redo that mural or reimagine it for that. And so the Art Commission voted to fund that. So we, we plan to give, give an award over to him recent, or, you know, coming up. Sorry, I'm tongue-tied here. And we do have the building owner here, Bud Tracy, who owns the building. So that, we just wanted to let you know that we're doing some updates to this. And we also have an RFP out for updating murals around town. So we put it out with a square foot price for, for just touching on murals that just need touch-up, but doing plaster repair when they need plaster repair. So we actually, two different prices that we're asking for, so we can mix and match as we need to, which will give us, which will give staff some, say, dexterity to be able to update murals without really going through any further process. So we just wanted to let you know that that was, that that's coming up.
Yeah, I love the mural thing. That's great. One thing unfortunately is that big ugly black trash can. The new trash can blocks the mural. And I was just wondering, when we do this, is there any possibility of moving that trash can? I think they're movable. Just unbolt them. But it really is like, really positioned poorly to where it will just be right in the middle of that.
I'll have to ask, you weren't on the ODBA at the time.
No, because I wouldn't approve those.
But the ODBA voted for that and they voted for the locations as well. So it'll be a whole thing to move it. Plus, we have to get Public Works involved. So I can't here tonight say that we can do that, but we can run that up the flagpole.
It just would be a waste. We should just move it.
Right, and so if you have questions for the building owner, he is here. I met with him about this matter to, you know, check off some boxes. It is a restoration of the mural. And so there's nothing really controversial or to decide about it, per se. But he is here and if you have questions, we would like to get this started for him.
Awesome.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
Do it.
I think it's a big improvement.
Yep, I agree.
And it's on Daniel's tour, right? He tells the story of Black Bart when he, when we go downtown.
That's for our, our story now, too.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
All right, and thank you, Bud, for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep.
Happy to answer any questions. I'll show you.
Yeah.
A little medical problem. I'll work on that.
You're close, good.
Had an issue, that's why I've been vacant for a while. Bud Tracy, Tracy Realty Company, but also in the downtown, several buildings. One of them is Northwestern Trading Company is the name of my LLC. So Northwestern Trading Company LLC. And I named it after that store on the corner, because it was in there. Mike Ish is the one who put it in and owned the store for years. And I bought the building from her and she's actually one of our investors in it also. And I'm the sole managing member. But wanted to fix the artwork there for quite a while. Number one, the horses that are there right now are artistic, but they don't, they don't live. They don't breathe. And when Jack does a drawing, I've seen him do people's dogs. He did the Feather River one over on Myers Street with the fish, that's one of the senior center. And he did the Orville Inn at the back of my property, over there in the alley. And there's some people that were taken out when I was in the hospital. And so he's putting those back in soon anyway, so I'll bring that to you if you need. But anyway, bottom line is we also wanted to get rid of the word antiques. Because what I wanted was this to be another, Huntington is where you start getting out of the downtown, so to speak. So when you get to Huntington, it gets a little weaker on the real estate side. Myers, Downer Street are strong and then you get a little weaker on the other side. So I wanted to lighten, to heighten the Huntington experience a little bit. I've, for years I've been in favor of Lincoln and Huntington being two-way each, but well, that's a separate issue. So it's something that might happen. In the meantime, I wanted to see it say historic downtown Orville.
Love it.
Instead of antiques. Also on the side of the stagecoats, I don't know if it's on that drawing, but we added in Wells Fargo, because it was, that was real. And then if you'll notice, behind the stagecoach, there's a big face and the hat on. That's from Daniel and that is Black Bart.
Oh, wow.
So that's an actual photo of Black Bart and that wasn't there before. Then, as mentioned, the, one of the things that Pat and I talked about was, what started me on this was actually the fact that I saw the, the wall starting to come apart. It's been there since 1980, probably. And, and there's a plaque on the bottom and that plaque's going to be replaced with another plaque that verifies what that plaque had on it. But also, and Sean Pierce is doing that for us, in charge. And so it's going to have mentions of the history of the art itself on it. And I'm with you, until I started getting pictures, this started with me about four years ago. And then I got into my issue. And by the time I came back, that black box was there. And I was amazed, there's already a tree, so that's another issue. But with the leaves gone, it's great. But, so we want to replace, also, we're going to take, the picture itself goes up a little farther on the building, so it doesn't leave that, that blank space on the top.
Nice.
There's columns that are on there and the columns are accentuated with trees right now. Those are going to be brought clear to the top. So there's a few little changes that'll make it feel better when you see it. Other than that, again, the thing I'm really after is repair the wall and so on. But the big thing I'm after is make the horses look alive, we really want to. And bring back Black Bart actually into it.
Yeah.
So, anything I can answer?
Love it. Yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
That's the update from the staff and Mr. Tracy. And so we'll move forward and, you know, bring back updates as it, as it happens. Chad, you have anything else?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is, any other staff report?
Yes, we have two more Historic Advisory Commission reports for you. No decision-making. But just so you are aware, Dirk's facade at 2270 Montgomery, it's at the end of Oliver Street there, is one of his buildings. He is renovating that. That is his sidewall. And that was on the 16th of October. He's actually just, just started it. This is a window and now it is blocked in. He's taking the window out on, on the Huntington side, I'm sorry, the Oliver side. And this is the facade on Montgomery, where this was a window that was boarded up at the bottom. And now this is bricked, bricked in. So that he's going to make both windows, multi-panelled windows. And there's, I guess there's the pictures not there of the, the other windows. But it is a multi-panelled window like this in front, two of them, with larger glass panels. So it'll look, look quite nice. He's, boy. He's not changing the, the facade in any other way, except he is painting it a lighter color.
Mm-hmm. Wonderful.
Good.
Thank God, that's wonderful.
Right.
Yep.
Good news.
So that's, that's one report. We also have a home renovation going on at 1510 Montgomery. The homeowner is working with our housing department to do some, get rid of some rot, put a new roof on and put a, a childproof gate thing on their porch. The, it will all be like-for-like. So that's just for information for the Historical Advisory Commission. They have, they still have to pick, pick the roof color. And the roof color has to be from column five, which is on the right there. And if, if the commission would scan that to see if there's any colors that, that they don't want to see, we can limit what the homeowner would, would choose, so.
Dark looks better, but.
Dark looks better.
I think so. So is this a situation where this is the funds that we have to help homeowners repair their homes?
Yes, I believe it's a housing rehab loan, which is a low-interest loan.
I want to get more people into that, okay.
Yeah, we have.
And then we're going to keep the double hung on the front? Or is that, or at least, you can get a new double hung with real glass.
The windows will be replaced like-for-like with Alpine white vinyl.
Vinyl.
Trim.
Same with you.
No, but it should be, wood looks so much better than vinyl. And it, vinyl really does take away from the historic character of a building. I understand that.
I had wood windows.
Just the one, I know they're like work.
I had wood windows.
You could restore that, but that's okay.
Especially if they have grids on the exterior, it's insane. I would never do it again.
Eventually, I'd just like to see higher standards in the downtown for a window like that. But I understand that is not really what this is about. And I'm happy that it's getting fixed.
Yeah.
But I, the double hungs with the wood and the older glass is really wonderful.
That's historic information for the commission.
Were there any other, did Pat have any other staff reports or?
Yes.
I know we needed to work on the November meeting.
Yes, as we talked about the ad hoc committee report with the proposed language changes for, for all the ordinances that are affected.
Yes.
Will be presented. We'll, we'll do it early enough so that our city attorney can review it prior. Also, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the Bree Solar Project, though the solar, 100 acres of solar that you looked at and approved and then rescinded. We anticipate the commission certifying this negative declaration at a special meeting on November 10th because of scheduling concerns. And we are hoping that we can get a quorum right now.
That's the morning meeting? Oh, okay, well, that's easy.
Oh, the evening?
Okay. Oh, yeah, I had it at 5:00.
What is that?
Yeah, I thought it got changed.
You're going to be in Europe partying it up, Pat. It'll be okay. You'll be awake at that time.
Veterans Day is November 11th and this is a Monday.
So what time is proposed for the 10th?
5:00 P.M.
5:00 P.M.
I can be here for that.
I can too, but I thought it got moved to a morning.
Yeah, legal is not available on the 10th.
That's what it was.
I am available, but I have a hard cut-off at 3:00 P.M. that day.
Okay.
So, you know, that leaves you with options to proceed and, you know, fill me in after.
We, I spoke with.
Is that a holiday, you said?
No, the next day.
I spoke with.
They're going to celebrate Veterans Day on a Monday? They're going to celebrate on a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Is that the deal?
That's when our parade is.
They didn't change it to? Veteran's Day is always on the 11th.
I spoke with the developers today and after having signed, signing for labor agreements this week, they don't feel like there's going to be any contestation to the EIR, to the environmental report this week's, or this time. So they don't think that they'll need legal there this time. They felt comfortable moving forward so that, as long as we have a quorum, they really need it to happen as soon as possible. The 10th is the soonest that we can do it and have it noticed and be legal so that, for a meeting. So if you, if we can get a quorum for, for the Monday, the 10th, 5:00 P.M., that'd be great.
I think we.
You show, you know, you show hands who can be here Monday, Monday, the 10th.
Monday, the 10th, we can do the evening.
F5.
Monday, the 10th, I'm good, as long as you're here.
We got a quorum right now, yep.
We got a quorum.
Just to add that we did have a conference call with the developer. And I advise that it would be productive if he had confirmation that the concerns of the objectors from the earlier meeting were satisfied. And that would give me a little bit more confidence in letting you just go with it. But, and I'm anticipating that that will come to pass, so.
So is 1:30 or 2:00 okay with you or are we still at 5:00? 5:00?
Well, it depends. If we need the attorney, then I could, I could come early, too.
If you can get a quorum at 1:30, I'll be here.
I could if I had to.
And, 1:30?
I could do 1:30.
We just need one more hand. So we don't have a quorum.
What time, 1:30?
Come on, Glenn.
Monday? Well, you know, I do work.
That's, that's where I'm at. That's my problem.
No, I do too, I know. I do a lot.
A 30% chance I can make it 1:30.
How long will it take?
Hard for me, but.
How long?
What's it, this is just a special thing only, like last time.
A half hour, probably, yeah.
Is the girlfriend of the union, labor union going to be here again? Yeah, I'll do it.
The project labor agreements were filed, so I, I think we're okay on that now.
The 10th?
Okay, so now we're changing it?
At 1:30, okay.
Okay. And for our, the Business Advocacy Committee changes, did we put the body piercing? That got written down somewhere to combine that? Okay, good.
So let me write down who raised their hand for 1:30?
These four.
Okay.
I know, I feel kind of guilty.
I might be in more clothes, I might look grungy, but.
Guilty not being at work right now.
And I'm a 50% chance if I could be here at 1:30.
I could just take a long lunch.
Listen, what we'll, we'll do with respect to noticing, because there's a noticing requirement, is we will notice it for 1:30 P.M. or as soon thereafter as a quorum can be achieved. So if we happen to not have anybody, that won't kill your chance at doing it at like 4:00 or whatever. Okay?
Okay, one other item or two other items. The annexation study is in progress. So we presented it to the Board of Supervisors on September 9th. They did not have any objections, but our consultant is working diligently on refining the boundaries of this potential annexation strategy. So we anticipate bringing it to the Planning Commission probably in December now for review.
And does, does that come down to a vote of the residents?
An annexation is subject to protest vote if enough residents want to do that. If nobody objects, it can, it can go through LAFCO. But if 50 plus one, 50% plus one of the landowners in that area object, it's dead. Does not, the annexation cannot happen.
Which area is this?
Now, there's six, six areas that we still have in, in consideration.
Now, I've heard more than one objection to the idea. When people are asking me about that, do I tell them that it is our intention that they do not have any, any restrict, they're not going to be restricted from doing anything, that they're not already allowed?
Grandfathered in.
That they can, they're allowed, that still be allowed to do everything that they're already allowed to do under county jurisdiction?
As long as it's legal.
As long as it's legal.
As long as it's legal.
Grandfathered in.
I feel you, Pat, I feel you.
They would be grandfathered in for their animals inside.
That's right. I told them that that's our intention, as far as I know, but I'd like to be able to tell them more.
Our code requires us not to change the animal ordinances for people we. Our code requires us not to change the animal ordinances for people we annex.
This is in Thermolito?
That's the.
So that's the location that they're having the pushback from.
Well, I mean, what, sorry?
I can send you the map if you want.
Yeah, because some of that zoning out there is ridiculous. Are we, can we address that during the annexation, or we have to wait?
We, if we try to change the zoning out there, they will not get annexed. So we, our intention is to leave the zoning just as it is. Yeah, 100%, we will not get.
No, but I mean, some of that, like RR5 is ridiculous zoning out there.
We do not have RR5 zoning. We have other zones that would have to be transferred to the nearest, nearest zone that we have.
Okay. Because that can be looked at, right?
Yeah, every parcel has to be, every parcel has to be looked at and brought in a certain way. We have received the CDBG grant approval to do engineering work in Southside for the 54 blocks without curb, gutter, sidewalk, and streetlights, et cetera. So American Engineering, used to be Wes Gilbert Associates, is busy doing that engineering work for us right now.
Cool.
Do they have an anticipated timeline, where we'll see something, at least a rough draft?
Yeah, one of the sidewalks in.
Rough draft on design first, Natalie.
Easy there.
This is a couple of years.
I've been asked to be part of the next status meeting with Public Works, so I'll let you know as soon as I find out.
That works.
It's important. Okay, that's what I thought. So this only is the design part.
Right, but odds are the CDBG funding would come later for the rest of the project.
Okay.
It's probably $80 million, so it'd be tough to, yeah, parts.
Generally, it's sectioned off in three to $5 million sections.
We have an estimate that we paid for someone to put an estimate together for us. It came in at $80 million.
Yes, nice.
That's pocket change.
Yeah.
Get the right developer that wants to come to town.
How about, how about you guys?
My, no.
How much can you shave off of that?
No, I'm not, no, don't even look at me for that one, Pat.
I know a guy.
You know a guy. Hopefully, it's not this guy.
Yeah.
Come on now.
Anything else? Are we good?
I did have one other thing, too, that I was going to share with you guys. Can you hear me? Okay, so I just wanted to inform you that I have seen an increased trend in business license applications for residential care facilities, or also known as sober living environments. We've received a few, and primarily in the downtown area. We do have codes that restrict how many you can have, but it is a permitted use if it falls under a certain number. I did receive like four applications in one week, so I thought it would be just worthwhile to notify you guys of that trend that we're seeing.
Does that require a use permit?
It depends on the number of people that you have.
They go over six.
It is a permitted use by right with six or under.
In residential.
And they're all six or under? Most of these?
Not normally.
Not all of them. I've received a few different applications. Some are permitted, some have not been permitted. And it does depend on the zone, as Pat was saying. In R1 districts, it's permitted. I think in any residential district, it's permitted. In Pukey districts, it is not. In mixed corridor, it depends.
But if they go over six occupants, that requires a use permit, correct?
In some zones. In other zones, it's not permitted at all.
Does anybody police this?
How do you mean?
Are you trying to tell our secrets?
What?
Are you trying to tell our secrets?
He's letting us know, but, no, the state of California doesn't want you to do anything.
No, but I mean, if you're allowed to have six, but they're having 12.
There's no way that we can really.
Well, if someone reports them to code enforcement, then that would be a problem for that person, but.
So there is really no?
It's complaint-driven.
Complaint-driven.
Penalty or anything of that nature, so you can basically get away without doing, getting a permit.
Code enforcement would open a case if a complaint was filed.
That's right. Or if it was known.
Depends on the integrity of the owner. You can have very bad owners that don't care at all how much, how much they.
I think code enforcement needs to be proactive, not reactive. I don't know if that's the motto of.
We may not also always know about it, so if they're just, if they're quiet and they're not kicking up any fuss.
Yeah.
May never know about it. So then it would come down to complaint-driven. If they knew about it, then they would probably engage.
It also becomes a dangerous line of police state versus, you know what I mean? If they're out there constantly knocking on the doors without a complaint to drive it.
No, I mean, I mean, there's always avenues and openings for, you know, things of that nature. I mean, you know, I don't know. No, I just, I'm really, you know, minimum property standards is, you know, we need to make sure that houses and buildings have minimum, that they are taken care of. You know, there's.
And I thought the nuisance ordinance did that, but I do not think it does that after meeting with Ron Belslar. So we really don't have a minimum property standards ordinance.
I mean, there are things that were approved, and the landscaping is not maintained. Parking lots are not maintained. You've got boarded up windows, you've got broken windows. You know, the Big Lot Center comes to mind where Holdbruck's is and everything. I mean, that place is just a disaster. And if you don't hold a property owner accountable, it's just, you're not going to get a good tenant in there. You know, it won't get an anchor tenant. I mean, so there, as a city attorney, I don't know if there's an ordinance that we can do with, you know, a minimum property standard. Because it is an economic obsolescence.
So our code operates based on a nuisance-type standard. It requires some kind of moving information that allows the code enforcement department to act on something so that they can't be, you know, kind of called out as selectively prosecuting certain conditions. Of course, if you see trash on a front lawn, broken windows on a building that looks abandoned, partially boarded up, that is something that should be reported to code enforcement. Now, we do have a new system where, you know, you can take those bits of information, including uploading photographs and everything like that, to the appropriate departments. That's going to be, I think, helpful.
Orville 311.
311, yeah.
So it's online?
Yeah, it is. It's great. It's an app.
You can download, download it on your phone.
I've been reporting, I've been reporting things.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
About two weeks ago.
And how's it been doing?
It's great. I took a picture, and I get an update, and they let me know.
I don't personally know, but I do know, because I haven't done any of it. But I do know that our staff has tested it out, and I encourage everybody to check out the 311.
I can say it's well-used.
It's.
It's a bit, yeah, they're really, they're, it's increasing what we know that is going on, so it's been really great. Code enforcement and Public Works love it.
Great. Well, that's good. Then that's a step in the right direction.
In terms of your request for proactivity, that's even broader than just code enforcement. That's our effort to be, you know, more proactive and more engaging with the community in terms of receiving information from them that we can act on.
I do have another question, if you don't, but so, on the corner of Lincoln and Odam, you have, the old World Savings Bank is now a, basically a gold and jewelry pawn shop. But they, you know, they stick a bunch of stuff out, they stick compressors and lawnmowers and all sorts of stuff out in front. I mean, is there an ordinance where you, you know, they're not allowed to do that? Just put all that stuff out in front?
You know, that's fact-specific. I don't really have an answer for that, the way that it's posed. But I, we can certainly look into what the requirements are, if you think it's a, you know.
Nothing against the pawn shop, but it's, you know.
Yeah, I know.
There's just a lot of, you know.
Like a flea market, flea market on the sidewalk. I understand.
Out, right there on the walkway, and it's just.
I think that question is best posed to the code enforcement director to find out, you know, what are the limits of what he will see around town in sight? You know, I don't, I don't really want to opine on any specific property here with respect to what's going on in that thing without reviewing it first.
Just one example.
And then, I'm not surprised we're getting more applications for care homes. Obviously, MO and Orville do not have, and home care anymore. And so I, you know, this is not at all surprising, so I'd expect more in the future as well.
But she said sober living homes particularly.
Oh, okay.
These are sober living homes. This is not like medical residential medical care. This is a very different.
Yeah.
Yeah, medical rehabilitation is not covered by the residential.
Right. That's a totally different thing.
Yeah.
And it's, and the medical ones, I think, are very regulated.
Oh, yeah.
Very regulated.
They're regulated under Health and Safety Code.
Yep.
These are unregulated completely.
And there has been one that came through the DRC that's going to be coming in front of us eventually.
A medical?
More medical-based, yes.
Which does not surprise me that they're going to be coming.
Yes.
Can I throw one thing, one last thing out there? Just, it's be short.
We love you, Pat.
Please.
It'll be short. This is a good one. So, you know, Kylie's been here for just a few months. She's really doing a great job. But Kylie, do you want to tell them what you're doing in Washington coming up?
Yes, thank you so much. Next month, I will be out of town presenting research that I've been doing at Chico State. I am a Rural Reproductive Health researcher, and I will be presenting my work in Washington DC at an international conference.
Congratulations. Yes, awesome.
That is cool.
That was worthwhile.
That was worthwhile.
Yes, that was worthwhile.
Yeah, we're really lucky to have Kylie join us here on this team, so.
Yep.
So are we adjourning to November 10th at 1:30 then?
The special meeting on November 10th, the next regular meeting on the 20th.
Okay, so I will adjourn to?
Special meeting on November 10th at 1:30 PM or at 7:00 PM if you get a quorum thereafter.
We will adjourn to November 10th at 1:30 if we have a quorum.
Perfect.
Thank you.